All right, I'll call to order the Town of McCandless meeting of Town Council for March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple announcements here, we have a swearing in of a new police officer. Um, we have a presentation for that and I believe our head of public safety.
Mr. Lewis. Gentlemen, this is Kyle Lewis. Could you raise your hand and repeat after me? My Kyle Lewis.
Hi, Kyle Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
That I will discharge duties of police officer with fidelity.
No, discharge duties of police officer with fidelity.
Welcome to McCandless. Well, Lord, I just made this. Great job.
Thank you very much. A few other items on our agenda here, announcement wise, just another reminder, the Northland Public Library will host the two thousand twenty-four Garden Gala on Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, tickets are now on sale. Second announcement, Pavilion Reynolds and Yardways Pickup began on March fourth, two thousand twenty-four. I believe Pavilion Reynolds currently are still stopping to Public Works right now. Um, one other item I'd like to point out is we are gracious enough to have a community hero among us. Uh, Councilwoman Trish Clunin was recognized for her work with the Red Cross as a volunteer, there was a wonderful uh, video piece on the local news and I just wanted to point that out.
We can use more volunteers.
Uh, one of our other announcements is also the Officer of the Year presentation.
Good evening, everybody. So I bring before you this evening, uh, a candidate that I think is well worthy of this honor. As you all may know, the, uh, the Officer of the Year, we give it every year, it's in the name of Albert Devlin who lost his life here in the line of duty. Um, in the nineteen seventies, I think seventy, seventy-three maybe, in any case, um, God rest his soul. Uh, the officer we selected this year, I think is, uh, very well deserving for numerous reasons, but one of them that I'll focus on is that when our previous K nine handler decided to retire and take his partner with him. Um, this officer stepped up, volunteered to continue the program, uh, so it didn't die on the table, so to speak, here in the town. Um, I think that this decision was not one that came lightly, but his wife could probably speak to that better than anybody here. Uh, because imagine taking that partner home every night with you, right? This is probably a bit life altering. Uh, he did that, I think he's handled it, uh, very well. And it wasn't without sacrifice, right? Partner goes home with you, now the wife and, and the family have to make room for this, this, this canine partner. Uh, before he did bring him home, no, there were six weeks of re-restraining.
Yep, six weeks.
Uh, with his new partner, six weeks that I don't know if he'd want to revisit, but he did it. And the family didn't have him the whole time, so, um, my Officer of the Year, Sean Davis, our new K nine handler, what up Sean? The one I think embodies a lot of what I see there for the McCandless Police Department, what we all endeavor to do out there in this community every day, you know, he engages the public at every opportunity, doesn't always bring his partner out, right? Probably depends on his mood. Uh, follows all his takes up, he engages the public with, you know, um, professionalism, compassion, empathy, and everything that all of us, including all these officers behind me strive to do every day. I think Sean handles it all well and, uh, congratulations. His award should probably be extended to his family, right?
Hey, hey, look, my dog, I'm not being honest with you, I'm not any more deserving than any of my coworkers. I'll be hired in five years in August, then when I got hired five years ago, I said, my main goal here was provide the best service I could in the community that I grew up in, and that will always be kind of my goal moving forward, so I appreciate the recognition, but I don't do anything different than that.
And he's always said that to me, when we have our conversations, our sidebars, he always said, you know, I'm, I'm out there.
I think it's funny, I just asked the owner standing there, I said, does the dog like you yet? He goes, oh, we're getting there.
Oh, we're getting there, he's just, he has his challenging moments and, you know, we all, handler, it's a learning process, but I appreciate you guys being willing to continue that program too, because I do, I do enjoy, Haley, my wife, will probably have her own opinion, but, um, we're getting there, so.
If you want to let them, if you guys. If you guys want to do any pictures or anything, we'll give you a moment to clear whatever you need to do, that way we're not trying to run through agendas. If anybody wants to step out, by all means. Thank you very much.
Nobody left.
They're all excited to talk about the liaison reports. All right, I think we can, uh, go ahead and keep things, do we want to close the board?
Thanks, Matthew.
Thank you. All right, let's keep things rolling along, uh, this time we're on to item number four of the agenda, public comments on agenda items only, if you have public comment, please come forward, state your name and address within the towns. And we'll provide up to five minutes.
Hi, Ellen Wright, nine six three five, Old Tumor Road, Allison Park, PA one five one oh one. Uh, I want to say it's really nice that the agenda was first, uh, put out before the close of business on Friday. Um, it was nice that that was done, so thank you. Um, then it was amended on Sunday morning. And, um, it would be nice when the agendas are amended to be able to know what the difference was between the one that was put out and the amended agenda, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any others at this time? You moved a little, okay, moving on, uh, let's move, we need, uh, the previous minutes were provided to you in council packet. Are there any additions, deletions, changes?
I moved to accept minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Nick, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Uh, moving on to reports of committees, uh, reports of public safety, Mr. Wall, would you like to take over from here?
Yes, uh, Chief.
He's coming up.
He's coming up.
No, don't worry, a couple of things, folks, any questions, throw them at me. Um, of note, in this month's report, besides the normal training in bigs and blue, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Representative Venkat yeah, and Mr. O'Malley's helping me work through, try and, you know, get that fifty thousand dollars that they were able to, uh, help us secure through the state. So hopefully that's coming to us eventually to maybe help grow that LPR intersection camera program. Uh, also I saw here, I think I, can I also make a sales pitch to Town of McCandless Police Department's hiring? Right, and we're trying to get it out there, um, I think last count, we might have three applications already filled in and getting some interest through the post, Gazette, uh, ad, folks are submitting resumes and such, and, um, making some inquiries, so, so we're out there.
Good.
Other than that, any, any questions on public safety wise, folks?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, folks, appreciate it all. Everything tonight.
Bar Marshall, Jeff.
Uh, I don't have anything to add to the report, um, one thing I'll comment, which I know a lot of you are aware that, uh, last month I spent the majority of the month um, working on the, uh, grant application for the Storks application, for the Storks appliances that would go on our hydrants. Brought everybody together, including West Street Water, um, actually, I gotta, I gotta thank Mr. Casey here for getting the ball rolling on that, um, then from there, it was a big, big hill to climb, but um, seven hundred twenty-five hours later, we're in good shape, so the grant was submitted, at least that's what I was told, so I'm going to go based on that, but, um, as far as when we would hear something, probably not till next year, um, the AFG grant is, is highly competitive. And there's a bunch around, so again, fingers crossed, everybody, um, you know, rub your four leaf clover and hopefully we'll get it and we'll see where it goes, other than that, anybody have any questions?
No, hats off for, for getting that done in that short timeline, very important, and, uh, you know, don't purpose getting those hydrants, I think also we got them in the end of your first call program update.
Yeah, the first due, so, yeah, there were a lot of, so just going through them, identified hydrants that were not in bright locations, um, I was able to get addresses, so eventually that'll be in, um, kind of included. So the hydrants will actually have an address for the fire companies, um, there, you know, there were some five houses away, there were some on our side of the road, and we got it all squared away, so, um, it was kind of killing two birds with one stone, so that's wonderful, it all worked out, but um, fire companies definitely helped that, is they had to supply a lot of information, um, to our grant writer, because the town cannot host the grant, so it had to go through a fire company, which was Ingamar, they stepped up and, and said they'll do it, because both Peebles and Highland were already, uh, applying for regional grants, so, um, so we were able to do it, so again, fingers crossed. Anything else?
Yeah, okay, I have one question. It's ten years ago that Highland Fire Department got the grant for smoke detectors. They expire in ten years, so we need to make sure we're informing our citizens that they need to be replacing.
Yeah, we can put something back as a reminder, now, last year I did an article on smoke detectors, um, for McMail, and I specifically mentioned about, you know, lifespan of detectors and things of that nature, but again, you know, we can put something back out in McMail, just kind of remind people.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Thanks.
Building permit report for the month of February.
Uh, if you have any questions, uh, let me know, it's in your packet. Wasn't extremely busy, but that's not uncommon in the month of February.
Number one, liaison reports, personnel board. You have the meeting minutes in your packet, does anybody have any questions? Volunteer firefighter steering committee, Mr. Hart.
Uh, there was, uh, there was no meeting of the volunteer firefighter steering committee, uh, the, the companies are working on, uh, driver safety training, uh, coordination right now.
Thank you. Um, again, let's Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, Mr. Casey.
The meeting minutes are in your packet, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
I had a couple, I attended that one, we attended them, enjoying, um, just a couple of notes I had made, I thought were worth, uh, talking to for that. Um, it was mentioned at that meeting that they are fully staffed, um, which is a good thing, you know, they're assigned to full positions. They are at a fully staffed level, um, grants are continuing to roll in, they spoke about, uh, specific employee grant where, uh, one of the employees was able to achieve, uh, a training background. It was a wonderful grant, by all means, please reach out to, uh, Chief Dell, more information on that. Um, their wheelchair and transports have increased over time, um, over the previous years, um, their calls are continuing, uh, to get better. Um, you know, they have a new board member, Franklin Park Board Member, uh, was renewed, a new person was added on. I believe it was the ER Director for UPMC Cranberry, and he also serves in a capacity with Cranberry EMS. So it was a good addition, what I see, those are my notes I made from that meeting.
Good question, um, for January, there was a very low revenue per call. It was at two eighty-four, where it's typically more into four, sometimes as high as five eighty, is there a reason given for that?
You know, I asked that same question, the Chief Dell, and quite honestly, I forgot what his answer was.
And I, I semi remember there, there's a billing issue where they don't release all of the billings on that first month, they, they span it out. So there's something about their billing and you'll have to ask Chief Dell for it, but there was a specific reason, they knew it was an outlier.
It was low in January last year as well, I did note that too.
They talked about that, the reason why it was still last year, but it wasn't, it was this year, but there's a specific reason where they, they string those billings out in order for them to not hit all at once.
Just said that number with the very high call volume.
We all had, yeah, but there was a reason.
I have a question too, with the, you, you had mentioned, Mr. Singer, that the wheelchair transports are building up, I thought that we eliminated wheelchair transports altogether.
No. And Trish.
They actually obtained, um, an exclusive right to provide wheelchair transport, which is bringing in a income to the MFPA.
Is that UPMC?
Yes.
Yes, it was UPMC.
Yes.
So the reason I asked, I bet.
And this is different, I do recall a, a conversation where they were saying that wheelchair transport was going to be, um, not priority, it was just because a lot of times it was not income producing, but this is a different program, a different contract that is providing the service now.
I have a personal experience where they have actually turned down wheelchair transport. So I, you know, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
And Trish, I went over the financials last year with Trish Copiously, and they have a very good position, I think they're better positioned than probably any other ambulance authority in, in the neighboring area.
Listen, I got a guy from my experience, and I know Nick said the opportunity, I had the opportunity, I don't know if Doug has, his new council members. But we had a chance to meet with the leadership, and I, I just don't mean Chris Dell, I mean their command leadership, and it was an impressive display of what they put on, we're doing a great job, we're doing fantastic work.
Absolutely.
Is there any public comment on public safety? I will turn this over, Mr. Hart.
Uh, so we'll first have, uh, reports on facilities management, Mr. Sherman.
You're the first one to pronounce my name right, sir. Thank you. Some of the stuff I'm going to go over is on the report, but I just want to touch on it, um, the HBAC project phase two, which is the other half of this floor, is on schedule, will be done, uh, by the twenty-fifth of this month. At that time, probably three days before that, they're scheduled to get down, they're going to do the entire downstairs all in one shot. We met with the police department today, and gave them a little idea of what to expect, uh, uh, Sergeant Agley, um, Lieutenant Bezo and the chief, uh, or we, we made sure we talked through the specifics, so there's, there shouldn't be any, any holdups or hiccups, so hopefully that, that project downstairs will take about five weeks, all the exterior units are set behind the building. Um, after the, uh, police department is finished, then we go back and take all the fin tubes out, uh, around the entire building. Um, I did, uh, I started back on the window replacement program specs, and I'm currently working on that, I'm hoping to have the window project roll right into this one, this is complete. Um, the paving bit opening is March twenty-first, ten AM at, uh, our lunchroom. We did have the bit opening for the tree program, the, the tree trimming, uh, we had that on the, uh, twenty-ninth of February. Uh, we had a few bidders, American Tree Service, uh, pretty much, uh, was the winning bidder. In case you don't know, the tree trimming, we do on every road, we're going to pave, we have the trees trimmed, so the, uh, the equipment from the paving doesn't break branches off. Um, detention pond work started today, full time, uh, it will go probably most likely to the middle of November. I think we had four people on it today, there's two guys that will do nothing but cut all day, every day. Um, Walpark Vestal Field, the, uh, playgrounds, the, the plans and the excavation, excavating plans are completed. We're supposed to be starting the excavation before the week's end. Uh, Brian and I did talk, I put up two POs in today for the equipment for the playground. And hoping we're, we're probably going to end up installing the playgrounds in-house. Um, and camera system for town hall, called the town hall compound, which pretty much in, encompasses the DPW building, the lot, this parking lot, the rear parking lot, uh, those cameras are completed. Um, I don't know if they're completely online yet, but next after that, which will probably be next week, will be the, uh, play, the cameras around the playground and pavilion out here, and then right after that, we're hitting the Walpark. I think that's enough, that's it, any questions? Yes, sir.
Do you have any cameras down where we have the cardboard box recycling?
Yes, there's a camera on it.
So we, if we get back into recycling cardboard and want it down there, we'll be able to catch the license plates.
Uh, yeah, definitely be able to catch a license plates.
Those are license plate reader cameras.
No.
Okay.
Now, the, the two, we specked it out that the, there's a camera watching who leaves each, each exit or entrance.
Okay.
Those can be converted to, uh, they can have plate smart added to them, so they are plate smart ready, those two, but the one on the actual, uh, dumpsters is not, however, you see a white car or whatever down there, you know it, it's leaving, you can get the plate then.
I went over to Franklin Park.
Yeah, I saw that.
And it's beautiful, they have cameras, they have it marked that they have cameras, and people don't throw litter all over the ground, I don't know whether it's because people coming out of North Park decided it's a great place to dump everything or what.
Uh, we're in a very convenient location for people to just bring their stuff on their way to work or whatever, and, and we have a lot of business owners here now that you know, they're getting a hundred boxes a day delivered and have to get rid of cardboard, so.
Except for they have the same type of cameras that we have on the, on the.
Yes.
Okay, so that being said, then you don't really need license plate cameras, because they, you can blow up an image to.
Oh, yeah, you can definitely, yeah.
You'll be able to clearly see, uh, on those cameras, because what, what are they, eight megapixels?
Uh, they're at least eight, I think they are eight megapixel, actually, these two are, and the ones coming in and out of this, this facility, I mean, right now you can't even play without even focusing on it, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep, any other questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liaison reports, environmental, um, advisory committee, Nick.
Meeting minutes are in your packet, and we're also having a roadside cleanup on the morning of April twentieth.
Birthday.
Yes, it is, also the same night of the Garden Gala too, so a big and busy day for the town, McCandless.
Uh, I need to check with you, because, you know, I have an idea on how we can get all the businesses involved in the camera.
Okay, cool.
On, real quick, Nick, on your, on the notes for that, there was a thing, I think it was on cleanup day, that the committee wanted a little bit more leeway. Was there more to that, or, you know, read that wrong?
You wanted more of a say or something. They wanted more say in um, how they were using the, the grant that we just got.
Okay.
That was what that was about.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, ad hoc, uh, technology committee.
The meeting minutes are in your folder, I have to tell you, uh, I thought the meeting was at seven thirty. Uh, the meeting was at six thirty, Mr. O'Malley called me, and, uh, by the time I got here, nobody was left. So I, I screwed up, but, uh, the meeting minutes are in your packet, if you have any questions.
Ad hoc, uh, stormwater management committee, uh, Mr. Singer.
The meeting was back, uh, March, I'm sorry, the minutes are in your packet, was back in the January, the, I need to note the date needs to change on those minutes, um, but I think this is the first time that they have been put in your packet. So if there are any questions, please let me know, one of the other things that falls under this is also the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-three PRP summary. This is an important thing, understand this is a, a state mandated pollution reduction plan that towns require, it's part of our entire MS four requirements. And Gateway Engineers, our engineer record, uh, put together this little summary, and I think it's value, because it shows we are up to date where we need to be. Um, with all the projects finishing this year, we will have met all the requirements for this cycle, I would hesitantly say we probably are one of a few municipalities who are this far ahead, um, and we actually have banked credits as well, um, that we can use for the next cycle, so, um, hats off to our engineers, our administration, our public works, everyone involved in this, um, stormwater is definitely a forefront of McCandless, and this indicates we are, so.
Would you like to make a comment about our meeting, our recent meeting with the state?
Uh, yes, we, we had a, um, there was also another meeting, um, with, uh, a few council members, administration, a lot of, um,
Southwest Pennsylvania Commission.
Southwest Pennsylvania Commission, a lot of government agencies regarding some flooding issues, stormwater in the Pine Creek Valley. Um, was a great meeting just to connect and coordinate, and look at issues as a whole across the entire watershed, and try to, uh, come up with some solutions, so was well attended, put a lot of communications together, and, um, I think things can progress forward from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer, uh, is there any public comment on the facilities management? Saying done, we'll move on to, uh, Ms. Clunin.
Thank you, uh, we'll start the reports of the services committee, we will start with liaison reports, and Mr. Casey and the MTSA.
Minutes are in your packet, but I would like to draw to your attention that we're having some preliminary discussions with MTSA about creating a ordinance or some kind of action to try to help them remediate some of the water that's coming into their system when there's storms. Apparently there's one section of town that is historically bad, and it'll increase the amount of throughput. It double, sometimes triple the amount of water, now, if we could help them maybe put something in, in an ordinance like we do with the dye test, where when somebody sells their house, they have to have their, uh, their, uh, laterals checked, so that, uh, if there is a, a repair needed, that it would then be repaired. But we're also going to try to pursue to see if there's any, any, uh, federal or state grants out there that we can try, try to help the homeowners, so, you know, we've got a long road ahead of us there, but it's something that we're starting to look at.
Well, the, the aim of that check is to try and reduce the cost to the MTSA and.
Exactly, it won't reduce anybody's bill, but it will probably keep their bill from going up as we can lower the operating costs for the authority.
Follow up on the stormwater, inflow and infiltration is a big deal in sewer system where stormwater that ends up in the sanitary sewers gets treated the same as it gets there, so they can cut that cost.
So they're treating more water.
Treating more water than stormwater.
But it's raining.
Exactly.
Well, we still think this is coming in from, uh, sewer.
From laterals, coming out of the house.
From the houses, yeah, literally.
Where, you know, you have. A construction project years ago and they, they put in the sewer pipe. And in order to cut corners. They. I, I guess.
Put a hole in the pipe.
They put a hole in the pipe. To let all the stormwater go, right?
Correct. Practices in the nineteen fifties, homes naturally have water surround them. In order to get that water to drain away in a new modern home, there's a French drain system that carries that water away. The nineteen fifties, the practice was to go ahead and put that into sanitary lines.
Okay.
So it's, it's not a common practice now, however, our aged. Homes in certain parts of the town were built that way. And that's, as the municipal authority continues to retrofit lines. You have to go further and further upstream to reduce inflow and they're starting to get to the points where those are the last points to reduce infiltration.
Much so sure, we would want to scope all the way up to that point, but that is a problem.
That is a significant expense to home sellers. I do work with many municipalities that require this. You're talking around two hundred, two fifty for the camera inspection. And if a repair is needed, it could be anywhere from five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars before you sell the house. So take, that really needs serious consideration if we're gonna put that burden on folks before they sell their homes now.
This is in addition to the dye test.
The dye test is one seventy-five, they're in and out. That's an easy.
Yeah, the camera test is.
Is a whole different thing.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, if we have nothing further about the MTSA, Mr. Duddy and the library authority.
Meeting minutes are in your packet, but I will also mention again that the Garden Gala is gonna be on the evening of April twentieth. And tickets are on sale online.
Are you cooking?
Sadly, I haven't.
Okay, and do we have any public comment on the services committee?
Since I didn't get an opportunity last meeting. Iron Pelleando four one one ha.
Let me interrupt. And our new president of the Northland Public Library.
As I told Jason, when. Everybody else stepped backwards and I, and I. So, thank you. Anyway, it is state report time for the library and Amy Steele and her management staff. Have been working on it. It's a ten-page, a very, very small print report. I'm not gonna attempt to do. Many of these. Statistics, but I, there are two that I wanted to point out. The one is the library usage for the year twenty twenty-three. Northland circulated one million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven. Either physical or electronic materials. Most of them were physical. And that is the highest of any branch, including Carnegie Oakland in the county. And then the other number that I'd like to share and. I think we've bounced back pretty fully from the pandemic on this one. Attendance at our local programs for twenty twenty-three. Sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one people. So it's, it's a valued resource and I, I just wanted the community to know exactly. The contribution that the library makes. I also point of a personal privilege, would just like to take thirty seconds and add my personal gratitude. And admiration to Councilwoman Clunin for all that she does for the community, most recently relative to the Red Cross.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in the agenda, item number seven, old business. I do not believe we have anything. Moving on to item number eight, new business. Your new business.
Yeah. I have a toast. For each petal of the shamrock, this brings a wish your way. Good health, good luck and happiness for today and every day. That's in lieu of my green.
At this time, are there any public non-agenda comments?
Allison Park, PA one five one oh one. I was looking to see minutes that had been posted after they'd been approved. And I didn't check today, but even last week, the environmental advisory committee, they'd already met and approved the minutes. But the minutes hadn't yet been posted and there was something else too, and I don't remember what it was. So it just, but it. You know, that after they're approved, that if they could be posted so that we can see them.
Thank you for the comments.
Paul Heckman, one oh five two nine, Abby Lane. I'll start where Irene left off, congratulating Chris and thanking her, Trish, for everything she does, especially going out in the middle of the night. For fires and accidents. It's amazing. And I also like to thank town and the police department, and I was hoping to keep it still here. We had a death in our little community on Saturday. Unfortunately, a gentleman is estranged from his family. Therefore, we had trouble getting in the house and we had. The paramedics there, we had the fire medic truck there, we had the police car there, including Officer Davis. And his partner. And especially for Officer Davis and his partner, it was a long day because. They stayed until. The coroner was able to come and we were able to get, or they were able to get a release to actually take the body out of the house. It was a long day, especially the poor puppy, because he was in the back of that van, bringing very long time in the rain. And out in the rain to do his business. But we, we really appreciated having everything go the way that it did. Because it was a kind of trying moment for. The couple of people in the community that weren't quite sure what to do and where it was going to go. So we, we really did appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. There are no other comments at this time. We will adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate matters. Thank you, everybody. Is there another comment? I'm sorry.
We're making a decision on the Rachel Parsons District of Divine Providence resounding this evening.
I believe it will be up next meeting. Yeah, it's scheduled to be on the.
Said, you, your only could be was tonight, but you just put, it'll be next time.
Generally, we do any planning and zoning issues on the second.
The second.
Monday of the month, so that's how we try to keep that.
So that was like the twenty-fifth or something like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I will ask again, are there any other public comments? Okay, then at this time, we will adjourn to executive sessions, discuss real estate matters. Thank you, everybody.
We're doing that here.
Everybody take five minutes, let the room clear.